We get started with our workshop, um preparation of the October ninth meeting. Uh clerk, roll call.
Mr. King, please.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
He's from town.
Okay, does anybody in the room have anything that needs to go first? Any prior movements, engagements? Speak now or wait till the end of the meeting?
It'd be nice.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi.
As always, if you're gonna talk, we do have a new microphone system, so you don't need to hold the mic, but please approach the table at least so we can make sure we double catch you. If it's your case, thanks. And uh who you are?
Mike, uh, Viana.
Good to see you, Mike.
How you doing?
I'm Mike. It's kind of way sound like introduce myself to everyone.
I was appointed uh county trustee back in May and I haven't come down to see you guys. You know where we got fiscal emergency. I haven't come down because Vianna's problem, not Trumbull County's problem, to be honest with you. So, but we do need, we purchased an ambulance back twenty twenty one. It got delivered late twenty twenty three and we didn't have any funds in place. But we're coming down underneath the American Rescue Plan, infrastructure project application put in for the ambulance, see if we can get some funding for anything that's available from county through the ARC funds to recoup some of that cost and help us pay for that. And then that'll ultimately help us get out of fiscal emergency. Now, we have we honestly, we're one point three million dollars in the hole. That's public knowledge. We're down well below nine hundred thousand pounds. Almost close to eight hundred thousand, depending on how our reconciliation play out. So we're making sense in that. We're getting down there. This help would get us out sooner. Now, who I give this to, both filled it out, Mr. Heygood. You can attest to what did we put in for the ambulance, whatever it's purchased, what we have. So now, the problem with the ambulance is it's a newer one. It's on a twenty twenty three chassis. And I didn't know this until I came in there. I started practical firemen. They don't have a long life cycle. But we have some, but they have twelve, fifteen year life cycle for these things to go. So on one hand, we could return the ambulance. But by the time we return it and pay the restocking fee essentially, it's gonna cost us forty, fifty thousand dollars. And when we get out of fiscal emergency in three or four years, if we, you know, potentially, we're gonna need to purchase a new ambulance and the cost on that could be twenty, thirty, forty percent higher. Then if we have one now, we get it in service. So be cost savings to us if we just keep this one. Bite the bullet, get it paid for.
Here, here's my concern, and I don't know if this is um now, this is a question for our legal counsel that we've retained, but if an asset is already purchased, going back and sort of reimbursing that, I don't know if that's allowable under federal rules and guidelines. I, I'm just being completely transparent.
And it had, it was not purchased.
Oh.
There were no.
Oh, I thought you purchased.
It was, it was ordered.
Oh, I see. I see. I thought you purchased.
There was no payments on it right now. I mean, it's, it's literally in lingo. And the guy we purchased, you know, he's like, yeah, we'll work on financing. We'll do something. He goes, I understand that he understands the situation we're in. So I don't, and I can't speak to what happened for our trustee and how it was purchased without somebody being like, hey, give me a purchase order, give me a down payment, give me some. There, there was none of that. It's like, it's literally just, here's your new vehicle.
I can speak a little bit on it. Mike Heygood, Fire Department, I'm the assistant chief there. This was a three-year process, okay? We ordered the ambulance, okay? And uh they had to wait for a chassis. Almost took a year and a half to get the chassis, okay? After the end of the three years, the beginning of this year, they uh delivered the ambulance to us, okay? We, they accepted the ambulance, okay? But then the bottom fell out. We had no money. So then uh this is the third ambulance that we have bought off of this gentleman and company. So we were in contact with him and he's like, well, you know, I'll work with you, you know, you guys have bought ambulance is awful, less beautiful and everything. So he said, just leave it there, let it, let me know what's going on and everything. So we started a, a, a fund, a donation fund at the bank in Vianna. So anybody wants to donate, we're writing letters to all the businesses, which will go out in a week or two to see if anybody is able to donate something to it. Um, like he said, i- i- if this ambulance goes away, then I don't know where we're gonna be because uh it's gonna be a twenty, thirty, forty percent. And it's, it's gonna be a wait time. And the, the two ambulance we have now, they're just wore out. They're tired. Um we're, we're trying to get this going as quick as we can to uh to, to keep our service up. Right now, we're limited because we went from volunteers to part-time to full-time staff, six guys, uh four people on duty and everything down to nothing, down to just all of volunteers. And we only have a handful of volunteers. So the surrounding departments, Allen, Liberty, Fowler, we even had Hubbard come in with their ambulance because we just can't, can't get ours out right now. But um we, you know, anything, anything, any amount would, would help us out. There's been nothing paid on it yet.
Okay.
So um, so that, that, that's where we're at.
Well, I, I wouldn't have an issue with submitting the application to the board and, and us taking a look at it, forwarding it over to our legal by making sure if it's allowable, obviously, we've done this with other communities. Um, you know, we, we'd love to help. I know you guys are in dire need out there. It's a public health and safety issue for sure.
Well, we probably should have came sooner, but it, it just didn't happen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know why. I, I.
Yeah, that's, Mike wasn't there at the time that this all went down. Don't know why it wasn't submitted sooner, but.
I give that to our clerk and then she gets submitted over to her.
Thank you. All right. Thank you both.
And I guess that's my thoughts too, is you know, we, you, you, you're like our fourth commissioner. You know exactly what we go through here, even every single meeting.
Right.
Um, so you know, where we stand with the stuff, you know, how much we've given out to different departments. Vianna has received at least three different grants that I know of more, probably more individual requests in that township than any other township. Um, the last thing we got was we bought Mark's radios for the police department and the police department disbanded. So and we got that in limbo too with all these radios that we brought that are sitting there. Well, with the numbers of radios we bought, you're not at the capacity of radios we bought. Um, so um you know, it's something we're gonna have to throw in the pipeline. You know, what I'd say is put it in, put it into the maybe like we did with the other ones. And then when we have our big meeting to address all the other ones that are out there, you know, in fairness to all the other townships and all the other entities that apply, we have to consider it equally with them and not jump some of the front just because they're in fiscal emergency. You can understand that. There's nothing personal. It's just there's a lot of wants out there and we want to stretch it as far as we can to make sure, especially if we take care of the ones that got nothing first.
Right.
Before we take care of ones that are already received some.
Understand.
No, that's just me being honest with my opinion.
No, I understand.
But, but I will say that this is because of the situation here. It's unique to Vianna and unique to the commissioners. If there is gonna be a hiccup in, in public safety, I think we need to at least look at that a little clo- closer than maybe some of the others, you know, I mean.
Sure. Public safety is definitely gonna go to them.
Understand it all.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand it. That's why I thought, and I, I understand that. That's why I haven't been on here, you know, say hat in hand. I don't, you know, it, it's our issue. We gotta.
And we appreciate you being, Mike, you got a, you got a tall order, heady, you got big shoes or a big task coming in the way that you did. So I feel for you that, uh, and thank you for stepping up and volunteering to do what you do because nobody really wants to jump into a frying pan like that, but you did, you know, that shows stuff of your character. So we're glad you're here.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I'm sure, sir.
Good morning. You entertain moving, I don't know, thirty seven.
Okay, let's go to number thirty seven, if we could.
Oh, we've got uh chief panelist or administrator panelist, right?
A number thirty seven.
I have the number thirty seven. We entertain moving that forward. I can get back to your township.
Yep, we'll go ahead and do this right now. And as to adopted resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County, earnings budget, the filing of petition for annexation seeking annex seven point nine acres of land, also known as thirty nine forty two Youngstown Road in Holland Township to the city of Warren, and further known as being section forty. Uh, the Holland Township being township number four in the third range of townships at Connecticut West Reserve and a further legal description of perimeter of the map by territory proposed to be annexed to the Trumbull County Engineers. Um, it was filed October seventh, twenty twenty four, being expedited type two annexation. Okay, why and where and what are the details behind that?
Um, once again, for the record, may I introduce panel on how attachment administrator, on behalf of the Holland Township, uh, we firmly oppose this resolution or for consideration. This uh thirty nine forty two Youngstown Road's life storage facility, um, they have been in operation for many years in township. They were in existing business that went through a remodel and expansion. They had city services, they had water, they had sewer, they were functioning without flaw. Um, for some reason, we're bringing to light the question of why all of a sudden, since they were an existing business that was functioning properly with water, with sewer utilities, um we'd like to gain some further understanding of why this is being, uh, why the annexations come to the table all of a sudden. Since they're an existing business, we're familiar with the ordinance uh Warren City, um, with respect to those that are gaining utilities from the city. Um, they apply for the tap um, they're being requested to five K annexation. However, within that ordinance, I apologize that due to a late notification of this. Uh, I do not have that ordinance, but within the ordinance, it states as an existing business, um they're pretty much exempt from annexation. So our question is, is we'd like to see a little bit of research done with this situation and why this is different than any other annexation. Uh, this is not a new project. It, it's been there. It's been functioning. A lot of work in front of fire department, um zoning as well, uh as far as water retention, all of those items. So we'd like to uh just have you take a few extra minutes and think about it, um, and really gather the information of why this is happening. I understand as an ORC code, it's gotta follow its proper methodologies, come to the commissioners, we'll get the letters. Um, but I'd like to search you deeper and try to apply situations with this.
This is all new to me. It's first I've seen it and uh apparently they just filed this. And they didn't reach out to you guys first. They didn't attend the township meeting.
So this has actually been going on for a year. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure of the dates offhand. I have a timeline built out, but I believe it was last year in September. Um, while wearing my other hat as fire chief of township, they were uh expanding their life storage facility and they needed to do a tap-in for a fire. Um, they already had water and once again, they already had sewer. But the tap-in for the water line basically promulgated question of annexation because they had to get services. It's again, they're existing. So they applied for annexation, but type two expedited. Um, it was withdrawn in October of last year, and I think you all had it on your bucket for December. Um, so it was withdrawn as a type two annexation. There were a couple of hiccups in the paperwork at that time. So um it then went dormant for a while. About two months ago, um, this legal group representing all this uh lots of associates of something of that nature, who says Natalie, petition or works for them, introduced language to Warren City that they were going to repetition for type two annexation to you. Um, that was a hiccup because as you know, by a higher advice code, it must come to you all first. Um, and not to the city, they've got some cleanup on their side. So this has kind of been going on for about a year. Uh, when I reached out and asked them, hey, you've been an existing business in the township with services for many years, you know, what's going on? Well, due to utilities, we basically annex it. And uh so.
Is it a matter of the outside rate as opposed to the inside rate?
I mean, there is an inside rate, outside rate, absolutely. Um, if you are inside the system, there is a reduction in that. Um, but we're also talking about a storage facility with maybe three of these. Um, we're also talking about, you know, schedule. I, I understand dollars and cents, income taxes is pretty much three or four, but in, in, in city versus out city, there is a change in that.
Yeah.
However, based on what my knowledge is, this was, well, you're gonna have to annex in to get the utilities, but the ordinance clearly states that if you were an existing group, there's no reason for it. It's not, this seems to be a forced annexation at some point.
Well, the, the, the way I understand it, Bill's here, and I will talk along the spot and give legal advice. Um, we do have to receive the, the petition for annexation.
Correct.
By a certain time limit, is that correct?
And here, and again, this one is one I will give a fair warning. It's one that we have a conflict in because we represent the commissioners and Holland Township. Um, but yes, the, the generally annexations have to at least be accepted and entered onto the journal at the next regular meeting.
And I'm just seeing the, our vice code is within five days. So it's not like something we can push back as far as, as far as receiving, as far as looking it over and making.
Correct. And I'm here today to just inform you and let you know that we're in opposition of it because we feel this was an existing business. But we're also familiar with the fact that you are see, there is a process and it has due process, and this is the first step in that process.
Yeah.
And commissioners, um, I just wanted to let you know that attorney Verle is, he still remains the legal counsel.
Yes. Yeah.
Because it's been on and has withdrawn.
And this is nobody but that business. No residents, no, it's not gonna affect any other neighbors. It's just that business.
Just that life storage business. So I, I am familiar with the process and this is kind of the first step, but I wanna be here to state our position on it, the opposition, and understand the reason why. As you follow the process, we'll get a letter within five days as well. But uh just to know that this was an existing business, we're kind of concerned why, why all of a sudden has this prompted? We want to be good collaborators with all entities around us. As you can hear, we're good collaborators with Vianna, providing EMS in there in their situation right now. Um, and just, so I just want to hope that you.
You know, has, has Warren addressed this at all, or is this something they're doing and Warren, does Warren even know? Is Warren asking to receive them?
I've had several conversations with the mayor. Um, is that they're legal at this point in time? Um, as per the process, as uh Commissioner Cantalace has said, this is the first step in that process and you're to find, well, the next step will be letters to each of the entities five days as per ORC. Um, it, it was addressed by the city by a resolution. However, they had to readjust that because it was the cart before the horse process. This has to come first by ORC.
And I thought, uh, uh, I thought when that happened, I, I was under the impression that the city and the township had discussed and that it wasn't done, it wasn't gonna happen. So this is news to me that it was refiled.
And.
You know, th- those are informal talks and I, and I'm not saying.
Correct. And we, I've had several conversations with the mayor, talked about it, and obviously when, when they uh, a type two, an expedited type two, although it has the annexation term attached to it, um, it is kind of a collaboration effort because the property taxes and orders remain within Holland Township. Um, but yet the, the city takes advantage of the opportunity of the income tax and those rates. However, with this one, the difference is, it's in facility, we're just kind of questioning about i- is this gonna be a new pattern uh moving forward, which really, which really hurts collaborative efforts, you know, it puts a little um little, little kink in things, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we, we want to come to the table and work together on these things. Just want you to look at this as the process goes forward, ask questions, um, and if anything else I can answer, sir.
And as you know, this is reared its head before in Trumbull County and similar instances. Um, it, it's a, it's a hindrance on our townships and we certainly understand that, but um we will definitely take a look at it, but in the meantime, we have to follow, obviously.
Absolutely. I appreciate you taking time to look through it as, as it walks through the steps.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start back at the beginning then. You sure can, yes.
All right. Uh, item twenty three. We could talk about that. Um, I'm Marilyn Page, Trumbull County Children's Services. This is a reappointment of Trudy Seymour, who is here to as the county prevention specialist for um the children's trust fund, Ohio Children's Trust Fund. Most of our committees don't require a commissioner appointment, but this one does. So I didn't know if there were any questions um about it that you might ask. It's, it's sort of unusual.
Did anyone else apply or was it open for people to apply or put out there for accepting applications for the board seat?
Um, we've always just because we're the um child welfare agency, we always put someone up for that appointment. Trudy was put up two years ago. She can only serve a total of four years. Each appointment is for two years. So hers would be a reappointment and then we would have to nominate someone else to come for you.
Issue with that.
Speak on it, Ken.
Heard of the director and the, and the board and um she, she's obviously been in this position.
Yes, for two years.
For two years now, just, just re-upping her.
Yes, one more appointment donation.
And she's served well in that position, so there's no need for a change.
No, no.
Do you want to add anything or?
Uh, no, I'm on the prevention plan, uh, work group. Uh, they've changed from uh yearly budget to two-year to allow the people who receive the RFPs to provide the service for two years. I never, I never did. Uh, my credentials, I'm an LSW, um, licensed social worker for the state of Ohio, uh, I'm a super officer for Child Services. And I.
Certainly have all the credentials. I don't have this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, back to the agenda. Uh, number one, there was minutes. Two minutes for the special meeting we had regarding levels for dam. Three, approve the bills. Four, transfer money sanitary engineer.
Uh, Bob Myrano, sanitary engineers. Um, this is a transfer from our project reserve fund to a Scoville sewer project in Nevada. Number five, additional appropriations. They're also sanitaries. Um, we have two of those. The first one is for eighteen thousand dollars. It's an increase in our water rental deposit refunds account. And the second one is related to the additional appropriation. It's five thousand dollars for the Scoville.
Okay, group transfer appropriations.
We'll see the mayor auditor's office. Uh, first we have our town services board. The first one, seventy thousand dollars in a fund twelve. This is an increase in various costs, through the screening exams, daycare, drug screening, food and utilities. Their second one is a hundred ninety thousand dollars in their capital projects fund four two two. This is to upgrade the case worker work area due to a change in capital assets policy. They originally appropriated that center capital asset account, but because we changed the threshold on that, they're going to uh, before that, every different object, whole different program. Um, the third one is the coroner's office, five hundred and forty dollars in the general fund to hazardous waste disposal. A court of appeals, twenty one thousand dollars in the general fund. This is an increase in costs associated with public defender and computer equipment. Law library, thirty five hundred dollars in their fund set one. Increase in costs associated with computer equipment refreshments. Uh, two planning commission ones. The first one is two thousand three hundred twenty nine dollars and fifty seven cents in the general fund. So office supplies and making good fire. The second planning commission is three thousand six hundred fifty dollars and their fund two two five. And this is due to an engineering change order for the G P V contract. Uh, two probates. The first probate is a hundred dollars on the general fund. That's an increase in costs associated with operations supplies. Second probate is five hundred dollars also at the general fund and increasing costs associated with office supplies. Uh, two prosecutors. The first one is six hundred dollars in the general fund. This is an increase in costs associated with operations supplies in their victim fitness division. And the second one is seven thousand sixty nine dollars and one cent. Also in the general fund, this is an increase in various costs, telephone transcripts and office supplies. A recorder has one for one thousand five hundred four dollars and ninety five cents general fund. This is an increase in costs in microfilm equipment maintenance. We have four sanitary engineers, but I will. This is the increase in cost in microfilm equipment maintenance. We come for sanitary engineer, which I will bet.
Uh, the first one is six dollars and fifteen cents. That's for a legal ad for the Meadowbrook Sewer Project. Then we have seven hundred and thirty dollars for our janitorial supplies. We have twenty thousand dollars for the Champion Water District for excavating work. And we have nine thousand dollars for the Howland Water District for excavating.
Okay. Item seven, approve of memorandum of understanding by in between the House Secretary of State, Chumbok County Board of Elections and Chumbok County Commissioners concerning the purchase of new electronic pole pads and any other necessary equipment for use by the Chumbok County Board of Elections. Secretary of State shall reimburse the Board of Elections for the lesser amount of either eighty-five percent of the costs of his acquisitions or the amount of the allocation as determined by the Secretary of State. As provided by section six-ten-three-oh, House Bill thirty-three, one hundred and thirty-fifth General Assembly. Board of Elections. Anyone on the line from the Board of Elections?
Early voting just started today.
That's true.
They did, they would hear.
It was, it was like two or three weeks.
Does it go, the next one where?
Next one, prove contract between Board Elections and knowing L E C for the purchase of new electronic pole pads in the amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand six twenty. Stayed with the right funding to reimburse a hundred twenty-eight thousand oh thirty-seven. For the total purchase cost with the remaining cost of two hundred twenty-eight thousand. Be paid with the transfer from the fund to the appropriate coordinate. Project's been reviewed and approved by the prosecutor's office. Now. The one above says.
Eighty-five percent.
Right, it's a reserve, so. The Secretary of State pay eighty-five percent. This one here, we're paying two twenty-eight, they're paying one twenty-eight, which the math doesn't add up.
Or the amount of the allocation is determined by the Secretary.
I would say when we talked with them at our office and then when they were here. Or they said that they were allowed up to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand thirty-seven dollars. And that we were able to use the whole amount because the cost of the pads were greater than the amount that we were getting from the state. I, I can't speak on that, but that was what they said about the rate.
Says it in there, Christine, or the amount of the allocation is determined, so.
So, did they already buy these things? It's early voting already started, or this is something they want?
This was right next to you.
Okay.
They were hoping to, they have not purchased them yet. They were hoping to get this done before the end of the year.
Okay. Of course, I'd like to hear a little more about it. This, this is all new to me with this. And, um, do some research after today, I guess, call down there.
Hold on.
Yeah, maybe if somebody could come tomorrow and explain it to us. Okay, nine, authorized Mike Salome, Chumbok County Transit Administrator. Diane, senior levy administrator. And Ed Stark Superintendent for Chumbok County Board Developmental Disability, or Disabled. Advertize for the seal proposal for Chumbok Countywide Senior and Disabled Transportation Services. Running on demand transportation service of disabled residents of any age and senior residents sixty and older. Beginning February one through January thirty-first, with the possible monthly extension period not to exceed twelve months. Total funding bills project will be February one to January thirty-one twenty-six, local share, one million one hundred thousand plus O dot fifty-three-ten. Contract is awarded at five hundred fifty-four thousand seven twenty-eight, totally one point six million reduced by October twenty-four to January twenty-fifth transportation costs. And Borough dot procurement policies, concurrents letter, as you received dated ten thirteen twenty-four, received with this process. Diane.
Nine, ten, and eleven are all related. So just to jump forward. Number ten is the, by the way, Diane is senior levy administrator. Number ten is to commit the local dollar match fund that is needed from sales tax that you've done the last two years for our transportation program, disabled. That comes out of the commissioner's, uh, sales tax fund. Number eleven is the commitment of seven hundred fifty thousand. But I could only go for one year at this point because our levy replacement language is on the ballot until we know how that will fall. The current seven hundred fifty thousand, one-year allotment that is in this agenda item is a, is available in our carry funds at this time. So once the ballot language is known and the placement passes, then we'll have a second agenda item for the following two years of this transportation. That is clear as much. And then, uh, item number nine is to advertise for a three-year transportation program. Currently we do have.
That's using senior levy though.
That's using senior levy, the disabled, and then Ed Stark's two, a hundred fifty thousand from board D D. Similar to what we did two years ago. Now Mike Salamon is, is pushing for a three-year contract. The reason behind that is you can, you can attract more transportation companies of that longer service commitment. We have a current grant right now that, uh, is in the signing process. I think Bill Danza, Prosecutor's Office, still has to sign on that. So Christine is going to bring that to you, to your attention, have you signed electronically? Have you just signed it? That grant started in July of twenty twenty-four, but we're just getting the contract in September of, you know, twenty twenty-four. We plan to use it for September, October, November, December. For the current transportation.
So that two hundred thousands we, we allocate for, um, disabled transportation. What, what do we, um, what do we receive every year on top of that? Because that's our match, right?
Uh, we currently are, are O dot, it's, it's about five hundred fifty thousand dollars that we've received twice now, not guaranteed.
No, but it's, it could be anywhere from like five hundred to seven hundred.
I would say right now, it's been five fifty, and we've been the only one that has received fifty-three-ten dollars.
And W R T has not been received fifty-three, down according to myself. Whatever it is, it comes to Chumbok County.
If a, an agency wants to purchase vehicles, that comes out of it first, and then we get the remaining.
Oh, I see that.
Antonine Sisters was at the meeting for the, uh, planning for that grant.
I think it's money well spent because obviously you're, you're more than doubling.
We have a larger transportation business.
To include seniors and disabled. Um, and for, I still get, I mean, people coming up to me and say, I need a ride, I'm a senior, how do I do this? Diane, how, can you, just for the record, so everybody hears this, um, for people listening. I mean, it helps to get the word out there all the time. You need to be sixty years of age or older.
Or a disability.
Or disability. And then how, what's the process like? So everybody?
Call Mike Salamon or myself. Uh, Mike is at three-three-oh-six-seven-five-two-eight-seven-three. I'm in six-seven-five-seven-eight-four-six. To get an application, we can email it, we can deliver it, use it to unhide, we can mail it.
Send the process.
Try to make it as easy as possible. Soon as we get that application, you're approved, you're in the system that day. We do need proof with a state ID, that you are of age. Um, and you're in the system and you have, uh, the ability then to schedule a ride two days in advance of your need.
The cost of rides.
Even, and I've said this lately, even if you're sixty and over and you need a colonoscopy, you're not allowed to drive home. Maybe you don't have someone that can drive you home. The system will pick you up and drive you. You still have to be registered. You're perfectly healthy driving, but that day you need that medical appointment.
Okay. And, and approximately for our door-to-door trips, uh, as of, as of now. Obviously, that's, but, um, what's our cost of door-to-door trip?
Two dollars each way.
What, what, what's it costing us?
Uh, our, our program is at twenty-five dollars.
Which is significantly lower than it's ever been, the twenty-five dollar. I think competition has driven down those prices.
Positive program yesterday, I mean, we get daily ten calls a day to register.
Yeah.
Mike's on vacation, that's why I'm here to speak about your impact.
So, so you think a three-year, so we, we're thinking a three-year contract would obviously maybe get some of the larger groups to come in and bid on this because with a year or two years, they can't make up for it if they have to buy vehicles and, and not know that uncertainty of, okay, in two years, we're not gonna be here maybe, so why would I put the capital back into my business? This could potentially attract larger providers, right?
We're just doing one year now, is what you're asking for?
No, this is a three-year program. My, my local match from senior levy, senior levy. I can't ask you to commit for years, but I don't know if I'm gonna have three-year collections.
So why don't we do a three-year contract? We don't know if we're gonna have the money for year two and year three.
It has in the language there that it, it could even be reduced if we don't get the grant. So it's dependent.
And that language is in the contract?
Yes, is in the R.
Make sure the commissioners have a copy of the R.
You do.
Okay, just, okay.
He says there is an out, if the levy doesn't pass. And we cancel the contract.
You send the R P to the end.
Or if the fifty-three-ten dollars are reduced because Antonine Sisters wants to buy a vehicle, that amount goes down.
We've had enough funding. We actually have remaining funds from the local match. To meet the demand.
To meet the demand for the year.
Even just the local match, we've got enough to meet.
Been fiscal irresponsible, those dollars, we, we appreciate it.
Okay. Number twelve, grow Chumbok County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the individuals listed. Necessary permit fee has been submitted and approved. Donald Mobley, Dei Muteko, and Chester Schlebel. Thirteen, grow the engineer to grant special annual supplier fleet permits. TK Excavating, Dave's Excavating, Sugar Oil and Gas. Fourteen, terminate the employment from the position custodian with the Building Maintenance Department. This was gentleman that just walked off the job and never came back.
Bush, yeah, but that would be correct.
Yeah.
Multiple calls, yeah, um.
No response, probably.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not really sure, to be honest, what happened after custodian, um. There's really nobody who's able to speak to it. I even called around, asked if anybody, you know, said anything, and he said, I'm just flapping out, leaving, and he did that, so.
Anyone heard from him since?
No, no, like I said in the note.
Well, we know he's not missing person or, you know, anything like that, right? I'm gonna terminate somebody else and find him in a closet somewhere or anything, right?
I don't know.
Is, I'll just ask this one more time, reach out one more time, see if we can maybe send a even certified letter of peace term or something to see that. Right? Just to cover our own bases, I love that.
Well, that would be for Mr. Hart, his assistant department, so, but again, I'm just telling you what I know as an resources. Yeah, I mean, again, not my department.
No call, no show.
Has Mr. Hart, has Mr. Hart, anyone drove to his house?
I, you know.
Last residence on there, sane, like knocked at the door and.
I mean, it's not typical guys that people do walk off the job and not on that. I mean, this isn't, this is nothing.
Potentially got another job.
Yeah, this is nothing atypical. I mean, they have, again, I could talk to Mr. Hart and he could go take a drive out, that's his department, that would be his duties and responsibilities. Um, but by no means am I going to go try and chase this gentleman down.
No, I understand, I understand.
I've tried to call him multiple times.
As, as an employer, someone walks off the job, you never hear from the guy again. I want to know that the guy is sane and alive and healthy and, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree.
Amnesia or something and, gross.
I don't disagree, but again, that would be up to the department. That's, that's their operational needs and their business, so.
See you working today or see you off today?
I don't know, he's hung up on me yesterday, it was like three days. Okay. I'll say something to Mr. Hart. But I will just tell you, I mean, I, just so for the record, on my county phone, I reach, I even texted him, and I have it right here. Hi, Don, I'm Mrs. Alex, Chumbok County HR, so I can't force somebody to call me that, you know? And I really don't want to send a well check to people's house. That's not, that's something I want to make a habit of doing.
But I think we should in this situation, before we terminate somebody from up being here, we should maybe have Mr. Hart make a call to the local police department just to check the welfare that, hey, he walked out of work and we haven't seen him in two weeks. Just thinking out loud, maybe that's something.
Maybe try reaching out again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just gonna tell you.
I'm sure we're probably right on this.
Stop all the times.
But we don't want to leave any things, just in case.
Yes, we, that's what I'm trying to say, we contacted everybody.
Oh, they murdered.
Everybody. Nobody has called us back, nobody has answered. He up and left, guys. I mean, I, this happens all the time.
So I would just hope, he was here three days.
Yeah.
So he just.
Yeah, he just left and didn't come back. I mean, we're making, I, I, I'm sorry, but you're kind of making a long, big deal out of something.
Like a long-term employee.
Exactly, that, I mean, I work retail all the time, guys. It happens every single day. This is nothing atypical. I think we're kind of overthinking this a little bit, um, and again, yeah, no, we watched him, so just so you know, I mean, I even, hey, I'm gonna be very honest here, I watched him on the cameras, walk out and walk out and get to his car and pull out. At that, after that point, the gentleman made the job, guys.
Yeah. As long as you understand that.
And if I make a habit, again, if that's your directive, as a human resource director, fine, but I'm not gonna do that for every single department. That's really the department heads, but if I started a habit now of doing, you know, well checks on every single person that doesn't show up to work the next day, unless it's a tenure employee that I, that we know, you know, there's something going on, this gentleman works three days and then vacate a job. Don't know what to say.
Different world than any, yes, I mean, we're young. Okay, fifteen, authorize board Chumbok County Commissioners to enter a memorandum of understanding of Chumbok County Sanitary Engineer for the purpose of carrying out sharing and drive Baker School wastewater infrastructure upgrades. Run it through grown virus state and local fiscal recovery funds. S O F R F or Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, A R P A. Funds in the amount of four hundred thirty-seven thousand four sixty-nine, originally allocated by the Board of Chumbok County Commissioners on March twenty twenty-four. Gary?
Uh, Commissioner Julie in the planning commission. Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Julie in the planning commission have been a lion's share of these actions here for the next, what are they, for resolutions, Julie?
Yeah, and I just noticed, Gary, the state line roads, that's one of the ones that you said you wanted to take money from, or no? Is that another one?
No, no.
What were the three that you wanted to take money from? Heat and shoe?
Contract day.
Yeah.
He's a two.
And.
And state road water.
Oh, state.
Station.
State road.
Yeah, we had, I think, three hundred fifty thousand of A R P for design engineering.
Okay.
Our contract, something three forty-seven, something.
The reason I asked was, I was gonna recommend we take seventeen off too, but it's a different project.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, fifteen through Julie Green, Chumbok County Planning, fifteen through eighteen are similar to the five that were on last week. We were working with the auditor's office and the legal attorney on the A R P projects to, um, obligate the funds. As you know, the end of year is, uh, the deadline for obligating all of the A R P funds. And this satisfies that requirement. So, that's basically in a nutshell what it is. So, that's basically in a nutshell what it is.
Yeah, the next four, which came through eighteen.
Next one is, uh, enter in a memorandum of understanding, Trump County Sanitary Engineer, first carrying out Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Seventeen memorandum of understanding, Trump County Sanitary Engineer, first carrying out State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. And number eighteen, authorized board of commissioners enter a memorandum of understanding with Trump County lateral, or sanitary engineer for purpose carrying out Scott Street Phase Two lateral systems, program of construction and engineering project. Please you have the permit to sign these, Gary, tomorrow?
Uh, Julie is in the electric.
Yeah. I'll take care of it.
That's your Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, now, at number eighteen, we're in much, Scott Street Phase Two. I've been contacted by Mike, uh, DeBott, he is their, uh, city administrator now.
Head.
Head, okay. Uh.
I'm buzzing.
Okay, well, anyway, from the village new call, and he says on the project, they had funding for the mainline project, but there was this one extension they had to do for one particular house that wasn't serviced, and so they had to spend an additional, I wanna say twenty to thirty thousand dollars to have this first connected. And he asked me if there's any way we could, we have access from funds from the nine hundred thousand dollars to be able to pay for that extra cost that they, um, they absorbed. And I told him I would give back to him, just so you know, I, I would give back to him, just so you know, and that's out there. I, I wish I had the number in front of me, but I would just refine it as myself, Scott Street Phase Two. So, anyway.
But the, but the funds allocated would be nine hundred thousand is what you're saying, it's gonna come in under that?
Right, uh, how many did we qualify so far, Julie, you were a member? Do we have about seventy, how many?
Over seventy.
Okay, let's see, we have eighty up there. On heat and shoot, we averaged about eighty-five hundred connection. Looking about six hundred eighty thousand, there's nine hundred thousand there.
That's the case, then I don't mind.
Okay.
Thousand, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, we need to figure out what the final figures are.
And, and if they've already connected, I don't know how that would work with our legal.
Yeah, that's the other.
That's the other part of it.
Look at legal and.
There was already a connection and it was re-hersing, I don't know if that's allowed.
Right, you have to look into that.
Can I imagine at a minimum would have to follow the U Chief and Careman Policy Guidelines that we adopted for your.
Well, when it was a public contract and they constructed on her, I would think it would be. Yeah. What if you have the requirement, part about trying to refer something that's already spent? That may be a stick one, and that could be, that makes this all. They did. Apparently this took it over the top of whatever their available funding was, it's like three thousand.
And, and I would have them double check everything on their end too, because they've had so many changes over the last year between administrators and mayor and council people, people that even presented to us that they, I think they're all gone, so I, I would double check all amount before we commit another penny to that program, to make sure they get their house sorted, ducks in a row. Exactly what they did, what they haven't done, what they're on the hook for, what they're not, rather than just have us come in the rescue with anything, you know, they've gotta stabilize there first. I think that's fair.
Agreed.
I'm glad they're on the right track, don't get me wrong, I'm glad they're moving in a positive direction and bringing the police department back and, and it seems like they had the, the big amount of turmoil and, um, you know, that's calmed or quieted down a little bit, they're under new management, new some new mayor and new board members and administrator, hopefully, um, they'll function longer again.
Oh, well, just the better that it was having this project offer that second pre-listening, that is huge, tremendous.
Thank you.
Okay, number nineteen, accept maintenance bond, number B one three two oh eight five seven issued by Selective Insurance Company of America for fifteen sanitary lateral connections for low and moderate income households. The heat and shoot project area funded the PY twenty twenty-two C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and A R P Act installed by Express Underground. Express Underground requests final payment for the completed work inspected and approved by Trump County Sanitary Engineers Office. Maintenance bond the amount of twenty percent, the final project cost of valid for a period of two years, ending September sixteen twenty-six.
I'll agree, Trump County Planning, this is one of the last few required items, steps to completing and closing out this competitive grant we received several years ago for the heat and shoot sanitary sewer project. Working in conjunction with the sanitary engineers office and the contractors and specifically Bill McFoskey, Gary Newbrow to complete this, I believe there were upwards of forty connections paid for through a variety of funding sources, including A R P funds, as well as C D B G funds.
Forty connections, how many connections total were there, eighty?
Well, they never, eighty-one active connections, but, uh, that seemed to run from the law. He requested an additional twenty-seven connections for vacant lots, of which he's gonna be a cap.
Oh, wow.
So, I, so let's say eighty-one active actions.
Okay.
Potential for more.
Yes.
With the best proposal and enter in a lease agreement, D B B Finance LLC with Trump County Sanitary Engineers Office to lease a sharp seventy C sixty-five copier to cost three hundred thirty-three dollars per month for a term of sixty months commencing November first, twenty twenty-four. And why this one, Gary?
Uh, I'll, I'll have Bob. Commissioners Bob Myrano, sanitary engineers, um, our current copier and sanitary engineer side of our office is over ten years old and we're, the maintenance costs, it's not currently under lease, so we're paying significantly to have that machine, so we contacted three companies to get quotes for a new copier. Um, it came down to doing better business, which is based out of Boardman and Crosby Mooc, that's based out of Warren. Um, looking at it, similar type machine, one was from Sharp, one was from Toshiba. The difference in the minimum monthlies, um, Crosby Mooc was about twenty dollars less a month, but their overage for color copies was a little bit higher, maybe figured with our current copying rates or what Gary does for public hearings and bid books, that we'd be better off paying a little bit higher minimum monthly to have our color overage be. So all in all, we will save a few hundred dollars. So, so I'm doing better at this.
Can any other department heads have any input on that? Alex, I know you've dealt with some copying machines lately.
Um.
You got a little education on it?
I will say, from what I've seen, everybody does what's best with their business, like I just heard, um, the opposite specifically, you know, because of the amount of color copies that go, so, and I will say, I mean, you can see it here. So, everybody's department kinda has like their nuances and what they need more so than others. Um, I, I will say that we are seeing a trend and kinda getting away from, it has been Crosby Mooc who's been coming in as well as the one, the D B B, um, they have been very competitive, so as, just keep that in mind as we're looking to transition, as you fall out of a contract, you know, again, not saying anybody else isn't doing great, but go out, get your quotes, and we have found that Rico has kinda fallen off and it's been more so of it's been, you know, Crosby Mooc, which is great, and it's local business too, so, I mean, D B B as well, they're all, yeah. I mean, so, um, again, something that you need to look into, commissioners, when you get a county administrator, which is not me right now, or in the future, or whatever, or whoever you want it to be, uh, that this is something that they should be doing. Uh, they should be looking at all contracts and looking to leverage ways to save costs, county life, instead of doing one-off nuances. Um, we probably could have a better leverage if we actually went out to bid as a county. Um, and a lot of these things are actually state purchasing, where you don't even need to go out to bid, so a lot of these lenders, yeah, are, are, they're our state purchasing, so again, um, something that we need to look at targeting in the future, um, but near future, right?
I think that was what Gary does, the color copies, absolutely, that's fact in this. Yeah, I think you've, yourself's detailed that way, so then.
I agree, but in general, there are ways that I think, um, you know, as we move forward, find ways to leverage better costs. You will always, more than likely, always get a better cost when you go out to bid as a larger entity. Uh, we see that with health insurance, we see that with everything, right? I mean, it's just the way it works, so. Speaking of your energy program, same thing, you know, you go out, you have leverage, so. That's how it works.
Okay. Twenty-one, approve change order number three with Corolla Contractors for the Anguille Santar Sewer Improvement Project number five S eighteen. Any amount of ninety-six thousand, six eighty revised to the total contract value, two point six eight oh. The entire cost of the change order in the amount of ninety-six thousand, six eighties we paid from project fund four seventy-three oh eight oh, three thousand, thirty twenty-one, five oh five four three. And it consists of uh, following breakdown. And Gary explained the breakdown of why?
Uh, Commissioners Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, yeah, it's disarming that I have company with another project, but I don't condition to this. Um, the poor soils on the edge of, as well, I think I've sent you pictures of the soil. That's poor soil, pretty end of that road. But we, we go back, go back with the NCSL travel on the road after, well, with the trenches and everything. But we worked with the highway engineers, okay, Gary Shaker, uh, and determined that, uh, the repair drive here, we're gonna do, uh, the cost of making measure, or the, 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 or yard, or the product, or six hundred square yards, so. Uh, that's what prompted that.
Okay.
Poor soil underneath that road, I mean, it just fell off in there. That's tracks down the road along the edge, yeah, so this, right, there's unstable soils underneath that road, basically, that's a problem. The repair of that, like I, like I mentioned, Commissioners. That's, we, we made sure the highway, it's his road, so we made sure the highway engineers are okay with the repair. And, uh, used unit prices from real in order to arrive at down to two thousand, eight seventy-two feet.
Fortunately, when you go that deep in the ground, you don't know what you're gonna.
Yeah, well, that, well, that brings us to the second part of encountering, so. Uh, during the course of the project, we also sense these, uh, uh, very storm sewer, uh, most, mostly, and this change where all the unit prices, these items. And this, that repair on the roads hasn't been done yet, we just filled in the trench with the dirt. It's still dry, but it needs fixed, but on these, we had to replace these as we went. You can see if they got something like that, well, geez, it's going to jump in blocks. You come across storm plates like these, uh, that they're just unmarked and are unknown out there. You gotta put them back in, because by the time you remove them, you'll have a resident coming up and saying, hey, my basement's flooded, it's true. Yeah, so it's gonna be fine, we gotta put them back in. Once it's determined they are functional, I can say you're running them. All this, but this was various items, uh, throughout the project. And hopefully this is the end of, of finding these things. Uh, the mainline pipe is, it's my understanding, it's, uh, this is about complete up there and we're still working on that pump station, so.
Okay.
But you can see that the various heights we ran into, basically reinstalled. Things like that. Oh, yeah. Something like that, I won't do that part, I don't wanna figure out what that was. Various things like this. So, anyway, that's the second part of that. The third part is that when they were growing that force made from the phone station down the border, go across the road. As you know, that's a very undulating, uh, toboggan up there, that means uh, like this, and you're trying to work that force made through there and get proper depth under streams and things like that. You're not getting it at the perfect rate you want to, to move it, to do that direction through there. And when it was done incomplete, um, we didn't get to exact rate we wanted, which gave us the possibility of another air pocket working in. So that third part is to install another air relief valve on this line. If, uh, if there is a high point in there, that's, it's not gonna block line, uh, in the future. Have something to release that air from us. And the fourth part of that is a no cost, and it's just a move to sustain, we should be, uh, to the end of the year. Uh, there were delays in getting all the down on the sort of pump station. But rela feels confident that he can get it finished by, uh, December thirty-first. And, uh, there's really no extra costs on our end, uh, for this, uh, to give him additional time till the three.
Yeah.
All right, well, one other tidbit on this. Um, even with this change order, we still have about eighty-five thousand dollars of surplus funds. So, we're not in debt for any part of this, it's only a hundred cent per project. About eighty-five thousand pesos, I was hoping it would be more, now it sounds about eighty-five thousand.
So there's no more for snacks?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-two. Approved personal action for employment transfer, Mr. Harrison Cole, from the position of sewer line maintenance crew leader. The position of maintenance worker, same pay range with the Trump County Sanitary Engineers Office effective Monday, October twenty-first, pursuant to, about April of September seventeenth.
Commissioner Bob Myrano, sanitary engineers, um, this is a union transfer, we had one union applicant, he has the required C D L. Um, he had shattered both of our maintenance groups being the package plants in our, uh, actual treatment plant. And he decided not to take the package plant, which is on the road, and was interested in being in our plan. Everybody's okay with him giving it a try.
Twenty-three, we deal already with children's services. Twenty-four, receiving place on file for regular purposes, twenty twenty-three, annual report for Department of J F S.
John Gargano, Trump County Department of Job and Family Services. Yes, Commissioner, that's the annual report that we provide to the commissioners, um, about the product, about the, uh, programs and the costs and things like that. If I may, I can go on to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, approve the promotion of Mr. Alexander Hillier as fiscal specialist with Trump County Department of J F S. Effective October twenty-eighth, and we paid twenty-three six per hour. County benefits, required to serve a nine-month probationary period.
Yes, again, John Gargano, Trump County Department of Job and Family Services. This is a non-bargaining, uh, unit, uh, non-bargaining position, uh, it's been vacant since, uh, the gentleman retired, that was previously in this in January. Um, there was, uh, several individuals that were tested and interviewed and Mr. Hillier came out and talked about that. As to twenty-six.
I, I noticed on this one here. It says what his pay is, is there a scale that he fits in on to? Usually those are included on all the other ones.
He's, uh, he's going from a, uh, range twenty-eight, which was twenty dollars and fifty cents to a fiscal specialist. Range thirty, which is twenty-three ninety-six.
The gentleman on the left, what level was he at?
Uh, I don't know, Commissioner, because he was in there for. Quite a few years, so I don't know what his final. Name was. Okay, and then number twenty-six. That's to approve the personal action to the employment of this Bobby Darby. As an enforcement specialist assistant at the Child Support Enforcement Agency. Uh, effective October twenty-first. And she will be paid fifteen thirty per month, full kind of benefits, but she will serve a nine.
All right, twenty-seven, receiving place on file monthly activity for the dog kennel. Twenty-eight, authorizing expenditure responding to mitigate the public health emergency rescue plan, nine-one-one dispatch center equipment. This is what we talked about last week. And this is in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-six. For the rest of the phone, backup radios and the dispatch consoles.
Okay, all that is very. More than tasty and, uh, because we're in the middle of the. Gotta be in the middle of a change here as far as a new building and all that is all affordable and you go with us whatever it needs to. That's important to do anyways. Yeah.
Uh, authorizing expenditure, Kinsman Township generator. And that is sixteen thousand dollars. The township admin building generator. And just Davis Township. I believe that is also. Uh, we're worthy generator for the township admin building and fire department, that one's forty-five thousand. Julie Green, thank you for that too. You know, you assisted. With the application there and make sure everything all fine and good.
Yeah, I'd be glad I could assist them to get their much needed equipment.
And, um. So those checks will be, or those presentation things, I'll contact Kinsman, just Davis and. Hubbard is the next one and Hubbard Township. Uh, now this for another generator. And the amount of ninety-two thousand four ninety. And that's for the admin building and police department. And then number thirty-four goes along with that. Okay, then, uh, entering agreement between board of commissioners, Toronto County Engineers Office, Vernon Township. To penetration patch and chip seal on Vernon Township roads. The engineers and townships are collectively known as parties. The engineers offshore coordinate, furnish home materials, labor, equipment, planning, supervise the work. Not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. With one fifty-one, six seventy-three to be paid by ARPA funds and the remaining from the township's gasoline tax fund. Okay, yes, that's just cleaning up a little bit then for. Work thirty-six. Uh, authorize me to execute annual documents required for agreement with Warren Roofing and Insulating Company. The design build roof place of project Toronto County Engineers Cortland Garage. An amount of one point, one million four hundred two thousand five hundred. Uh, was previously agreed and approved by Bill Danzo. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number. Didn't we change the name of the company from Warren Roofing and Insulating? So we need to change it again with this?
Uh, originally, when it was passed, it was passed to all we paid out of, uh, Fund Four Thirty-five Object Code, which is the last thing at fifty fifty-six oh nine. Uh, but that's only for design. That object was showing the design part, not the actual building part. The actual building part needs to be paid out of object code fifty fifty-four oh two. And that way it gets a success, a tag goes into our, um, applicable asset program.
Well, like you said last time, this needs to get moved, it needs to get moved up. At thirty-seven, we already handled with Howland. And then thirty-eight, a resolution recognizing twenty first annual Toronto County Sports Hall of Fame inductees. With great pleasure, the board of Toronto County Commissioners joins residents of Toronto County officially acknowledged the contributions. Made by inductees, gradually come to the sonor. And there's some names on here that, uh, of note. Ryan Allison, Dana Bolish, local sports, uh, newscasters, Sarah Cash. Kristen Clemson, uh, mega trustee. Michael Johnson, Bill Leonard, Robert Leonard. Uh, Don Lot, Todd McLean, Jeff Russell. Tyler Scott and B C Torres. Been here with Kelly Pat. Proud of their accomplishments and happy to, uh, recognize on them also. And I commission, I do believe they have, uh. That coming up, if you wanted to attend and represent the board of commissioners for that presentation.
I'd be honored to, absolutely.
And that concludes the regular agenda, I am sure, today. Anybody have anything in particular they wanted to bring up first? I get to my list.
Jimmy wants to go first, I'm pretty sure. Um, just wanted to bring up the RFPs that the commissioners agreed to allow our office to work on for improvements to the. And commission building. Jimmy was helpful with one of those projects. We're trying to put together a list of. Entities for the ceiling replacement project. And so I discussed that briefly with the maintenance department and they. I know we had discussed prior that if they're able to do it within a reasonable amount of time or if they have the skill sets. You know, that they would. So I guess it has been determined. I, I don't have anything in writing, but it's. Based on my conversations with several people, including Bill, that they would like for us to move forward with that. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, we do have the carpet RFP. That was returned last week and the, the prices are very close. So I wanted to, uh, present it to the commissioners and then you decide what. Happy would like. We asked for option one carpet tiles, option two broadloom carpet. Um, the, the broadloom carpet, uh, low bidder was DJV Supplies Incorporated for twenty-one thousand two seventy-six eighty-eight. The low bidder for carpet tiles was Eric Thompson Company, which is totally carpet here in Warren. And that was twenty-four thousand seventy-eight eighty. So it's a couple thousand dollars difference in price, two different. Materials, um, or types of carpet, I should say. And, you know. I'm not really tied to either one. I just thought I'd present that to the commissioners and see what your thoughts were on that. As you know, our carpet was damaged in twenty twenty-three and. Really, a lot of it's held together with duct tape and so it's, it's really outlandishly useful like. And so that's one. We did send a, uh, the. They request reprisers for both of those out to Viviano Carpet One, DJV, Kohler, Sotoli and Todd. And only received two back. Then we're also.
And as you said, there was a carving. One is like regular roll line carving that you would think. The other one is tiles and you brought up. The benefit of that is if someone can replace tile without having to.
I, I mean, I've heard from, I think you have carpet tiles in the back.
Yeah, we do.
So I just, based on what other people have stated, I don't have carpet tiles in my home, but. In a commercial setting or non-residential setting, yes, there do have. But it's the three thousand dollar price. I, I, I'm leaving that up to you.
I, I would be comfortable going with the carpet tiles, obviously, because if you get some damage to section of carpet. You have to pull up everything and do that. I know it's three thousand more, but makes more sense to go with tiles.
I guess I, I don't know enough about this to understand. I'd like to see where the tiles are in there, except not a carpet expert, as some other commissioners claim to be sometimes.
John Gargano J F S, we have those carpet tiles in C S E and, uh. In J F S. And there is an advantage because if there's a area that's damaged, you don't have to. Revolve all carpet, you know, you will get those squares and you just pull one out and stick the other one back in. We've had to do that a few times at both C S E A, J F S. It reduces the cost of having to, uh, re- replace the whole section of carpet.
Yeah, so a section. Especially if it's gonna keep the carving for another sixty-five years.
If a section gets more worn or.
Yeah.
Like you said, damaged.
We have it in, we have it in the, uh, I'll say the general areas, not where the workers are unfortunate, I should have. They should have done it in all areas. But those general areas, when you had issues, they come in and they just like pulled out that square and. Put another one in. Yeah, there's a little bit of a difference because it's a little bit newer. But still, you're not replacing that whole section of carpet and the cost and the installation, stuff like that.
The only difference I would think is it's something like yours, you're having. Thousands of customers a month potentially walking in and out of the building. Landing commission, it's just your staff. You're not having public through there, so the curve is not gonna get near the wear and tear as it would be. In a public area that people are coming in and out always had. So there is a difference there, just in my mind, as far as the use of one versus use of the other. If that was in an area where the public interacted. And I would say that I definitely say tile sounds like the way to go. In an area in a private office setting where it's just you guys with it, that, that's the only difference, sorry.
We also did a check, thanks to Jimmy. He, uh. Tutored me a few years ago and had a check on these contractors to make sure that they meet the lowest and best criteria. So. Uh, I don't believe either one are union shops. But they all both have, um, they're not, they're neither one are accredited through Better Business Bureau, but there's no. Uh, U C C filings, there's no OSHA violations against either one. So I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Are any of those a bit union shop?
There was only two bits. We sent it to five or six.
Only two respond.
Yeah, two respond.
Um, Joy, as you had mentioned, Alex, you mentioned the ceiling, you said. Maintenance is handling that scope or no, they are bidding out. So just to make that note on the record, they were okay. Bidding that, contracting that out. I want to make sure that that's clear here right now, because if the grievance comes across my desk, it will be denied, right? Is that what we're saying?
That's my understanding. I don't have it in writing, but I did have several conversations with Doug and Greg and Bill. And a number of other people in the maintenance department, um, and. We'll, we'll develop the scope of work and run it by Bill before we send it out.
I just want to make sure because, um, that is something that we have to, thank you for making sure, because in their contract, we do have that clause. Again, we talked about this, as long as, you know, if they say they can't do the scope work, then it's totally fine. We can contract out, but that has to come from them.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue with our particular offices because of the extensive damage to the ceilings from years of leaking. Um, it's just, it's the quantity of work that's required. If were that to be fixed and some of the ceilings aren't just a matter of replacing ceiling tiles, there are actually old systems that have to be replaced.
So the gridding actually has to be replaced as well, from what I understand. So it is a little bit more cumbersome, commissioners, just from, uh, what I put the course at me. Uh, so, yes.
Right. We also investigated that there was no. Basically, there, there was no payment. I was, I was under the impression that we were. Using part of our Corsa insurance funds to pay for the damage done. And based on what I read, it's about, we received a check for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, five hundred and forty-two dollars.
So, um. That's another, that's another issue, obviously, that we'll have to discuss with commissioners is how are we going to pay for. These improvements, um. So we're trying to put together the roof. Uh, not the RFP, the ceiling RFPs, uh, roof is just completed. Uh, the carpet, if, if it's, you know, I'll let you. Discuss this tomorrow and decide if you would like us to put it on the agenda or. I, I, at a public meeting, I'm not really sure how that process works. Or do you want us to just put it on the agenda for next week and then you can make that decision at that time, which one you want to. Award the contract to.
I could stay for a little bit more money if you're getting, if you're doing the squares. It could, you know, something unforeseen happens with the carpet, you don't have to trash the whole carpet, that's all. And, kind of. I don't want to say negligible, but it's only three thousand dollars difference in the grand scheme of things. You, you never know what can happen in the course of time. And, uh, instead of throwing out the whole carpet or having to live with this ugly portion of the carpet, you can actually take that out. Place, that's all. That's my thought process.
Just wondering why we don't do that for all county buildings and if it's that easy. Why, why did we not do it here? Why do we not do it in the courts? Why do we not? If that's the way to go, why, why not? And I guess that's where I'd like to get an opinion from somebody on why we have it.
I think we have in some cases, yeah.
Well, and are they all quoting the same thing, right? Like maybe one company is quoting that certain.
Our, um, scope of work is highly detailed.
Yeah.
Um, and so they're, they're definitely. Bidding on the same exact thing.
So you did your quotes on both of them on tiles and both of them on carpet. One was better on carpet, one was better on tiles.
Right, that's good. So I can wait. You just let me know when you want me to put it on, I mean. Put it on. Um, and then for the, like I said, the RFP for the ceiling and the sink are in progress. Uh, I did reach out to Bill today about whether, we have. We had some funds left in the general fund. I was thinking of for actually purchasing the sink and then. Putting together an RFP for certified plumbers to install it and, um. He said that we don't have an account with Home Depot, so.
We have, if we have one, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, that I can attest to. Yeah, I mean.
No, that's, uh, we'll just have to, we'll just have to find one. Yeah, yeah, they looked at Granger, they looked at Staples.
Sometimes leave a price match.
Right, no, that's true.
Sometimes.
And that's, I think, all I had regarding, uh, I also wanted to mention again, I mentioned that our planning commission meeting this morning. That the chamber is hosting an event this Friday from seven thirty to twelve thirty. It's a public policy conference. I believe you can register. Today, uh, on their website. Uh, I'll be speaking on one of the panels regarding economic and workforce developments to share it with a lot of people.
There's a cost, I don't know if it's forty-five.
Yeah, if you're a member.
If you're a member, it's thirty-five, right?
Forty-five or eighty, what, what is it?
It's at the Grand Resort.
Friday.
This Friday.
Seven thirty.
Twelve, yeah, seven thirty, twelve. And I believe we're considered, you work for Toronto County, you're considered a member.
Yeah, I've registered some people, like thirty-five or forty-five dollars.
John Gargano J F S, you know, about a month ago, we had a group cutting for the market. And this, uh, Friday, we're gonna have the market in our parking lot at J F S from eleven to two. Hopefully it turns out well and then we maybe try that, uh, on a monthly basis there.
Great.
I have one update. Our healthy aging grant has just been ended as of September thirtieth. Most of the programs used all of the money. Uh, most successful was a triple laboring partnership. Has probably twenty different households if they. Using that grant, they had a hundred fifty six hundred dollar reward. Um, the home delivery meal programs, both opposite of the parish, triple meals, they used all of their funding. And several others. And we have a couple that didn't even respond. They applied. I've reached out to them multiple times and they had just no. Effort made. And it's sad because, you know, here's money that I returned to the state. And it's roughly about sixty thousand dollars to ask. I questioned, I questioned, I questioned. I asked the state.
What's, what can it be used for?
We had all kinds of different programs. There was food programs, housing programs, and then other, and it covered eating things as, yeah, there's a technology piece. Shuckler Valley bought a bunch of rendevier type um. And they did like social gatherings with the seniors there and and, you know, around the world using these. Goggle devices.
It's good for Alzheimer's.
Pretty cool. And it's good for Alzheimer's, you know, it's it's a forever use for a while, while it works.
Self-use now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, during the Ross.
No, no, it can't be spent, no.
On water for the elderly. I'm just.
My mother gets the. Trumbull Mobile Wheels, she's getting eight bucks a day to get that bill. Why can't you just receive that eight bucks a day?
They actually did that with the last month. They did that the last month.
I got.
So it's.
They have a financial.
They tried to do the, you know, lower income housing.
Okay, so why didn't they just? Forget more, sixty thousand dollars more.
Because they didn't have that.
All right, I love that.
No, it's too late.
We're not trading her sewer bill for your mother's.
It's a good try. I thought you were gonna say water for an elderly. That would have been a better try.
Okay. Well, that's that's not bad.
Let's probably move on. Yeah.
Right now, with that grant ending. That's what kept. The other officer alive. Then she's going over to you, starting when?
She still has some funds to to draw down from, but hey, the final. So we're hoping by the end of the month.
By the end of the month.
Transition.
Okay, so once transition is your payroll. Where do we, where are we putting you guys together? What's, what's your recipe?
Guys, I've got one person at one end of the building, myself at the other end of the building, like Salomon.
Is the room in your building?
Think you guys were considering moving everyone over to the office, but that place needs a deep clean.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely room over, not necessarily where she's at, um, but. Right across the other end of the building at the office, probably a person. Um, they have um, more of a. Kind of like a wood paneling cubicle setup, if you will. Uh, they definitely have four available offices. Some are smaller than others, but you know, it is what it is. But I would concur, I I'm not saying any major sort of construction, please don't, that's not.
That's what you know.
We we definitely need a deep cleaning.
This box.
And declutter, deeply declutter. Um, but they would at least all have an available office. Uh, that is one thing that I did go look at myself um. In plans to transition all of you guys to be together. Um. But I just want to make sure that the commissioners are okay with, because it it's your employee of your day. Um, I think it'd be good to have it all together.
As long as it doesn't need any. Major transformational renovation.
It's 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 gonna.
Nineties sixty's panel, we've done tar- carpet, that would be in.
It's it's gonna need something, which I I I toured it with Alex. And it's it's gonna need something. It needs. Gutted with stuff that's in there that will no longer be needed if the agency's not there anymore. There's storage and rooms of things that probably date back to the. Eighties, sure. Um, there's file, things like that that actually. Are gonna need. Removed out of there. And a lot of the stuff probably trashed, thrown away, destroyed, whatever.
Well, I think to uh, square. Do you want? You know, while we're transitioning, um, while Mary Beth is kind of just closing up the funds and all that, I think that is something that maybe she should be tasked with doing. It's really going through and. Identifying what could be, you know, cause, I mean, that could be part, I mean, why we still have her under that office above the grant. That's something that we really should have, I mean, she's not delivering meals anymore and really, we're just closing up financials. Um, so I think.
And then not only that, but. Uh, I hope I'm not out of line with this. But when Mike comes back. If the grant paperwork's in, like an eight hour full day. He's gonna be moving that office too. He could be over there going through. Offices, preparing the office, you know, putting in full day as much as he can with allowable time. To get that office ready and. But if that's the way to go, I think that's the way that frees up one, I. Having one work over here and one work over here and one work at the stone building, I don't think works. So I I am fully supportive of. Mike moving. To there and out of the stone building, you know, as soon as we can get him out of there.
Yeah.
Preparing the office that could fit all of them together in one room or one thing. But again, I I would not want to work there myself right now, the condition that it's in. It will need deep cleaning, it will need. Um, you know, the bathroom, even the bathrooms and stuff need. Some love as far as cleaning. So we need to get a crew over there. We need to have Bill Hart assign. Days worth of custodial staff over there uh, to do something and probably our maintenance guys to. Just make sure even all the lights work and everything else in that building, because it's been ignored for a lot of years. And then. All the assistance we can to get Mike over there and assist Diane, still has her full office. That she needs to move, we can't just expect her to do it. We need to. Make it accessible so she has at least as good of an office as she had. In the other building, and even if that means expanding, knocking a wall out, doing something to update something. It it's gonna need. This isn't just something like, hey, move out Friday or new building Monday.
Well, I I'd like to see it. I'd like to see what the plan is before I say yes. Um. There there's a lot of, you know, all this is. Finding that, but we have homes for everybody right now. And it's gonna cost a significant amount of dollars, at least look at. What's that?
Yeah, I think that's a, I think um, Mr. Kalam, so what what we should do is, I think what I'm hearing from both of your conversations, and I'm just trying to find like a. Middle of how it makes work, is that. It would be county needing work, obviously, with the our maintenance, our maintenance department. Um, not, this is nothing that sounds like it's out of their scope, but they couldn't be between the answer coworkers and so. Through, so we could even just kind of cost out how much it would be for them to get all this accomplished, you know, what they think it needs, it would cost. That way we can come to you with a kind of sort of idea, plan versus just kind of. You know, here's what we're doing. Um, but I will say um, just. Outside of cost aside. Looking at it strategic planning wise, it it definitely makes a lot of sense. Um, to work harder, I mean, to work smarter, not harder, and have the proper players together. However, we can make that happen with the least, you know.
True.
I I will absolutely. Um, so if you don't mind, um, I think that maybe like a little mini team of Diane, myself and Bill, we could work together to try to figure out how we facilitate all this.
Sounds good.
Cause I do have employees asking me kind of like, what's going on? Where am I going? What am I doing? So I just want to make sure people feel like they do still have a home. The ones, again, who don't just walk off the job, but the ones who are here and who want to be here and who want to be, you know, long-term employees. So. Yeah, um, another thing to speak into that, Diane wouldn't use, I want to make this also clear, like, we're we're not vacating or losing that spot that she's in. There is a nice conference room there, also kind of needs a lot of cleaning, but, you know, that room will still be available for you guys to use. I mean, if 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 this comes to fruition, so.
Well, not only that, but the, we've had need right now, we've discussed. The coroner said he has some space to meet with families, to do things he needs to do. We leave the conference room as it is there. It's an extra room in that building, whether it be board of elections, whether it be another county. Agency that's looking to meet with something, whether it's. Sanitary engineer meeting with somebody, we can have, we have a county conference room in that facility we can leave as is. And whenever we have.
Yeah, it is, it's very.
It is, but it it'll it'll seat, you know, ten or twelve people, but but at least now for like the coroner's needs. You know, if he's working in a garage in one place, we know that's not gonna be anything in the next six months where he's gonna have something. And then upstairs, which isn't accessible really for the public. He can utilize that space now. That cover, that builds for, it's still our building, whether we have. You know. We're paying less electric anyway, moving them all to one or or less utilities on both sides, but we're still, we're still gonna. It's in the same complex. It's like we're gonna have an outside agency come in or we're not gonna lease it out to Joe Public. Um, but. Um, being the way it's set up now, we can leave it that, and someone's gonna need an office somewhere to go into for something. Countywide, and and I'm sure that's a, a good. Basic office for somebody. And if that one was big enough, it is more of an open space with the windows and light and everything, but. To move Mike and her into that room with three offices in that one, why would you do that? We already have four offices and. A lot more storage space than the other one that's already there. But I do agree it needs.
One extra question. Ken, I don't what county protocol is, uh, they have steam tables and heated bags for the food items delivery. Can that be donated to another agency? I mean, I'm sure seeing someone who hosts the steam tables. And the bags, maybe any of them.
I would be in think.
Are we allowed to donate that?
If we could donate to nonprofit, I would have secrecy.
Our new capital asset policy that was passed this year gives me the X of the electric official department head as to whether or not. Items might be sold or have deals donated to another place or scrapped.
Would that be a journal action, an item?
Uh, no, it's.
Department's head, yeah. Official approval.
Well, I think donating to Trumbull Mobile Wheels or whoever's gonna utilize those.
We have country neighbor.
Country neighbor.
Final, final, final on this, that's like nonprofit.
Trouble muggles and all sorts.
And then.
Bill Danso, Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office. Um, the capital asset program is different from what the law says. Just for what it's worth, if the estimated value is under twenty five hundred dollars, you can dispose of county property, essentially however you see fit. If the estimated value is in excess of that, then there's a specific procedure where it has to be sold at public auction, internet auction, something like that. There is a section of the code that allows you to to give property to nonprofit. Agencies, but there's a whole. Process to that where you have to advertise aloud nonprofits to sign up on the list to receive them. So depending on what the expected value of this stuff is, we would need to explore what sections of the law would apply to it. So. Just to kind of give you that heads up, uh, the first step is to give Diane yet another job and uh, try to estimate the value of the things that she's uh. You know, proposing that the county could potentially dispose of.
And I would say that's a great assignment for your first employee to do.
And she would, I mean, uh, Mary Beth, you know, because she's procured, I mean, at some point, we procure these items, obviously, they depreciate uh, time. They're old, they're sitting there. Um, I mean, like I saw them, they're, we're talking pizza warmer, you know, like those things to put pizzas in, like the.
Some of them are bad.
Yeah, some of them have food inside still, you know, like remnants. I mean, so we're not talking, Bill, I I totally understand what you're saying. Maybe the warmers potentially, but I I would have to say, looking at how old they were and and again, with depreciation, that.
So so enlighten all the. Their asset policy not correct.
We may have to work that.
We may have to work to.
Add进去value, like.
Just as a larger issue.
And again, Bill Danso, again, the the asset policy, I think, you know, as long as the state auditor is satisfied with the asset policy. That can be separate from the the actual disposition.
But I mean, it should include some of that.
In there, that's. And and we can certainly work on that, but it is, it's. It's hard to tell, you know, as you know, you could buy something that costs five thousand dollars and it becomes a capital asset. But twenty years later, you know. It's broken, it's destroyed, it's not worth five thousand. It's it's worth a, made nothing.
It's like. We get a lot, we do, there's a lot of older stuff that are, but for accounting purposes, we're not. Uh, taking things into, not reclaiming things through potential capital asset program that are less than five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we appreciate uh, items that are greater than five thousand.
Okay.
And that's been a while, that that did not get mentioned in the capital asset policy, we kept it very special. So we just.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, we didn't change any dollar amount thresholds, we just.
For the capitalization, for putting it on as inventory, we did change it before we said. And anything over five hundred dollars, the new policy said under a thousand, no, between thousand and five thousand was departmental, like had a discretion. So our capital assets are large and. Not one too much. Overburdened.
But that's just. Yeah, we had like staplers. Yeah, I mean, we legitimately had people putting staplers as a catalog, so and that's just not.
Hundred dollar item.
Yeah.
I got, yeah, I recently bought an eighty five dollar chair if they want to put it there.
The little Dymo printer names, I mean, those are not over five thousand, I mean.
Yeah, but we'll work with. Those, like, we used to amend that part of the policy to include worthy. On that, very good point.
Just to be safe. It's like that gap between the twenty five hundred and five thousand is what we need to really like. Yeah.
And and what we're talking about value was not the purchase price, but the value at the time.
That's the goal, right?
And what we're maybe requiring them to document at that high.
A good point. I'm agreeing. I'm gonna call you about that later. I'm gonna be shortly calling you. Okay, I will. It's not, it's not pressing. So we just have some work to do. You guys, so much to do.
That at all.
Once we've got it at a place where we can present it and feel like it's a, it's a.
Yeah.
feasible solution.
I think we're talking about a massive build out.
Oh, no, no. I mean, and also guys too, again, I'm just gonna leave it with this, don't forget that I love to. Home projects, again, I'm no H T T person, I don't claim to be something or not, but you can also paint white, you can paint wood in white. I mean, what does it sound like, coat of white paint? It'd be, it would actually probably make a huge difference, just opening up the space, just painting, though, because it's completely, I mean. It's like, no, nineteen seventies, but you can, you can paint it and and.
It's all coming back.
And there's blue duct tape on the car, filling back, that's all I remember.
At least, that's why I have.
And I'm a fan, because air conditioning business. And I go on. It's beautiful. Put them on my happy first, so I.
Still, I mean, we might have to, yeah, get a little.
There's a beautiful Trumbull County.
Well, area.
I don't know what that is, but it's beautiful. Art, it's on the wall and it's up the courthouse, and it really is a nice piece from, based on the cars in the picture, maybe the babies. There's Remnant in there or something. But that really needs to be preserved, maybe in a small society, where I'm taking.
I think, yeah, I think.
It's irremovable.
Yeah.
I think it's. It's on the panel. It's removable.
Okay. Um. Couple things, anyone else have anything before you at the mall?
Um. Prosecutor's office, yeah. Um, commissioners, we had uh, recently a long-term employee retire and uh. As you guys might recall, and I know the auditor's office might, uh. When an employee retires, there are certain payouts that go to that employee of unused vacation times and a certain amount of sick leave time. That is not something, though it is something we put on our agenda, the number of expected retirements, it is not something that traditionally departments budget for. For that payout at the end of employment. Uh, so that being said, we did alert the commissioners that we had at least one expected retirement this year that did happen. And now uh, we're coming to the commissioners because basically we need to get a a, an approval for. An additional appropriation on that. We spoke with the folks at the auditor's office, they said we needed to bring that to the commissioner's attention. Um, it it's not really an option, unfortunately, in a way, it's it's a, it is a something that the law requires us to pay out that vacation and certain amount of the sick leave. So um, just kind of presenting that to you, I'd like to put it on the the additional appropriation list for next week. The total of that is gonna be thirty nine thousand, seven hundred, ninety nine dollars and twenty cents. Uh, again, this was, I think, a thirty five year employee. Uh, that's the the good news in the prosecutor's office is we tend to keep employees long term. The bad news is when employees leave after long term, they generally have accumulated a, an amount of uh, vacation, even sick leave, it's unused, so. Uh, as long as you guys are are good with that, we'll put that on the additional appropriation list for next week.
It's almost the exact amount of your conference room you just lost.
That's okay, we could just get different colored duct tape from Diane.
Hey, we have a conference room in Diane's old office. You can use it anytime you want, get you the code.
I'll I'll get some new duct.
I've got a box and all, some duct tape with a printing.
There you go.
I'll roll up there.
Major Mason.
Yeah, Dan Mason, Sheriff's Office, I'm just gonna be presenting the uh. I C S solutions contract from last week with corrections. There was also a couple other minor. Uh, items that were left off of the. Contract that were in the RFP, and we were presented back to us, and we said, I also this morning had emailed you the contract.
Can you highlight the changes on there, so we can see what was changed?
It went from the eighty percent. All right, it went from the seventy percent to uh, eighty percent. Alright, it went from the seventy percent to uh eighty percent. Gross uh. That Trumbull County would get, it also, there was a text messaging that went from twenty percent to twenty-five percent. Uh they listed in the contract that they sent us fifty-five inmate telephones, the correct number is actually sixty-seven. And there's also a benefit that's gonna go be passed on to inmates. The original contract said two free phone calls per week, the new contract said two free phone calls per week plus two free text messages per week.
Very good, thank you for that.
I forgot one more thing.
Yes.
I was gonna bring up the work member applications closed on September twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Wanted to just see, I believe you received two. Applications and just would like to request the commissioners act, take action on that. In the near future, I know in past years, sometimes we've gone until the end of the year, I know our calendar is. Limited this year, where you had stated, I believe, the last meeting is December nineteen. So I I would greatly appreciate it because the very first Tuesday of. The year is our first Platts and Zodi meeting and in order for us to have that, we need to have. At least know who who will be replaced on. If anybody or reinstated, what whatever your choices are. So we had reached out to the Warren City for their recommendations. And I mentioned it to Mr. Barron today, I also reached out to um. Melissa Phillips and she had stated that she wasn't able to, you know, do that this year, so you know that, you know, you would. Indicated an interest of her potentially being representative for Warren City. Um and then it's my understanding that both Howland and Liberty have recommended that Darlene St. George. Continue on her term and, you know. So that's.
At large position.
Yeah, at large was. As I don't know for sure, I.
One is already. There is reappointment and then if he decides or decide different, there is one other one.
There's a third in there, but there was no application. So that's up to commissioners. Why we put it in there, there's no application.
No application.
Yes, telling you that from. So I just wanted to bring that up, I think the last couple years. You know, we we waited until the very last minute and it's just, it's just very um. It's a challenge for, you know, getting, making sure that we have continuity of. Getting things approved, so.
Okay. Okay, first, uh I I like to, just a couple of things I think we need to pick up, I've got a lot of calls lately. With the same questions over and over again, every week, every month. Uh first one, and the biggest question I get more than anything is what's going on with the dog pound? When is this dog pound gonna be done? Where are we at in the stage of the dog pound? And of course, animal lovers ask that question a lot, um. And also I got a call yesterday, I talked to uh Jason from Healthy Hearts and Paws. I mean, we have a problem that's out there that we need to address as a community, he's got eighty-one dogs right now at his facility. Our dog pound is maxed out with a number of dogs, they can have at that facility, so we've got. I would say somewhat of an emergency crisis going on in this county that there are so many abandoned dogs and cats. Um and with just relating to the dog issue, I mean, they have eighty-one of them, they're waiting for adoption, it'll print the private facility. And what we have with the pound, um we've gotta do something, we gotta ring some bell, set some alarm off or something for the public, one. We gotta, we have to be more conscious within our own families and within our own communities of people getting pets they're not gonna take care of. And maybe not allowing your seventeen-year-old son to bring a dog home and, you know, and breed it or or whatever. Um you know, we gotta have some responsibility as a community to watch out for our own. And if these pets are being abandoned, if these pets are being abused, they're being neglected. Family members need to step in and and handle it themselves before it becomes. Our responsibility and nonprofit's responsibility, the community's responsibility to take care of an animal that somebody. Took responsibility of and then neglected, so we, I I think it just, we need to raise the awareness with that as much as we can. Uh the other thing is I would challenge the community, before you go. Outside of the area for a designer dog and before you go looking for the next doodle that comes down the block, consider. No offense to the doodle owners, but we're kind of doodled the nut here, we got eighty-one dogs at home that. Wish they were a doodle right now, that are being unloved and in a kennel somewhere.
My little puppy milk is for the record.
What I would say is, if you're gonna consider a pet, consider adoption. Consider going down, at least seeing what they have available there at at Healthy Hearts and Paws, seeing what we have at the dog pound first.
Animal offer.
And animal offer, like, but before you go to. An internet search or whatever to find a breed or somewhere to find the dog, if you're just looking for a companion or, especially if you're some of these older pets. Um I'll be going down there myself today, but I've got an older pet, lost one. And that one's lonely by himself at home, when we take care of one, I can take care of two, um. So I'm, I'll be looking for an older dog myself or something that that just needs a new home without going through the old puppy stage again. So maybe consider that, if you've got a pet at home that lost its partner that's been with it for years and years. Of adopting another older one to let your dog at home finish this life out with a companion. And there's plenty of them in these facilities to do that, so um now are they in need of? People, but to feed eighty-one dogs, to take care of eighty-one dogs, we need a lot of volunteers and a lot of money. And, you know, and I know there's a lot of pet lovers, the ones that call me all the time, what's going on with the dog pound, I know they're giving. But I would say let's do our things as we can as a community to kind of, let's, let's tackle this epidemic that's happening here right now. And um assist these people that are stepping forward where no one else is. Um not to steer direction of any one thing, but any animal shelter, anything like that, you know, this is something, you have to write a check, do whatever you can. Because. Uh you know, to to hear there's eighty-one dogs in a facility that just opened, that's crazy. And some of the horrific stories of how you acquire these dogs are heartbreaking with this, so. That's why I'm asking maybe you, Commissioner, myself, we can go on social media, uh do some type of a challenge to the community, let's get these dogs adopted, let's. Let's find loving homes for these animals and let's lessen the burden of not only our dog pound, but the private entities that are out there in the shelters. By encouraging people that if you can, if you're considering it, now's the time to act and do something about it and let's, let's find homes for these animals.
I agree horribly.
And we're doing the same with our, you know. I know we have a big thing, we're trying to find a place for emergency services, trying to find a place for a morgue, we're trying to find a place for employees. You know, this is all part of the process as a community, you know, that we need to step up our game a bit.
So so I think to what we're trying to do, obviously with the, we got about fifteen or seventeen kennels that we have currently. And as you know, we're landlocked, we would double the size of those kennels, well over thirty kennels. Um in the new facility, the architectural renderings that we showed at the fairgrounds. And I wanted to scale that down a bit, I thought it was a little too much. Not not as far as the space, but the architectural design, the pitch of the roofs and and the high uh ceilings are all very nice, but. It doesn't need some of that stuff, so I think Dave Snyder has sent over new renderings uh recently to the commissioner, if you can look at those. Um I think we kind of scaled it back without functionally changing anything and what we're trying to do as far as. Care and adoption for the dog, so um you know, he even said if the commissioners are okay, the new uh. The new specs that we can potentially, potentially uh go out, uh. You know, this could potentially be in the fall, we could start breaking ground, um which is, you know, upon us, but um. We we know that there's definitely a need out there, obviously, that all these, and and this unfortunately isn't anything new. That we've had here in Trumbull County, our pound has been full many, many times, all these um. You know, different associations are full many, many times over, that's part of what spurred this uh development of a, of a new dog pound, so. Uh I I urge the board to look at those renderings and take a look at it, again, Bill looked at it, I looked at it and then just. I love the facility that that Dave showed us at the fairgrounds, but I thought it was just a little too um.
Resorbent.
But exorbitant, exorbitant, so we we scaled it down, um and I think, you know, without without changing the functionality. Just sort of scaled it down to to make it more affordable, um and continue to 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 do what we said we were gonna do and that's. You know, increase adoptions ultimately and um house more dogs and and have zero kill pound, that's what our goals. And uh we we're very close to doing that, but they need the facility in order to make that happen, so um, yeah. I'm sure Dave sent that over to you, if you can take a look at it, um he's been very good to work with, if you have any questions on it or you want any input on it. Please let him know, uh by no means, you know, saying that we're going this direction without words input, so um. But I think it's it's uh definitely um something that we need to look at in the future.
And I guess what my whole gist of this meeting today, when I think about this. Wheels of government, everyone knows goes slow.
Slow.
But you know, it took us a year to get this roof on the engineer's building and for many reasons.
Yes.
We started talking about the dog pound almost two years ago and we we got the two hundred dollars in our donation from benefactor that passed away. I just wanna make sure the public knows too, we we we're gonna step our game up with everybody, that challenge, everyone from the architects to the. Construction works, whatever it takes, that we need to, when we come up with idea, we gotta see it through so we get to the next one. And there are many, many next things coming down the road.
Oh, you're right.
And we gotta put some completion in some of these things, and we need to lead that way, and I know we are, we need to reiterate that our commitment that. We are moving forward with the dog pound, let's kick it in gear, let's go with it, moving forward with nine-one-one, let's kick in the next. Yeah, challenge Stacy, we need to have another nine-one-one review board meeting, let's get that going, let's not sit on it for another day. You know, let's, let's move in that direction, move nine-one-one sooner than later, so um we, we talked about, we had the damn meeting last week. Their board is meeting at the end of the month, their regular meeting, let's move on them, make a decision with what's going on, let's move on this thing and let's not delay anything, any further. Uh with what we're doing, um and the last thing really is outside of us, but I did get calls this week, so I promised I would address it. Um you know, is that a township with the issue they have with the auditor's office? They said, hey, what are we gonna do about payroll? We got another month coming up, we need to pay people, I know it's in with legal, this and that. We need to facilitate moving this forward, get the Zeta compensated somehow, some way, whatever we gotta do. To make sure that we don't get a situation where township is. Behind on any payments or gets in a situation financially, we don't want that with any of our townships, we wanna make sure everyone moves forward with that. Um so let's um, let's work together to do that, let's, let's come to some agreements, let's, let's move forward with it without having. I just don't want the wheels of government clogging up, as everybody knows, as everybody just assumes government. Um. Could be a pit, you know, that that where nothing gets done. We've done a lot in the last year and a half, you and I, and with this board, we've done an awful lot with a lot of obstacles and. We just wanna keep this momentum moving forward, make commitments that we have so much more to tackle, we can't get to that next up till we put the final. Uh the finalization on the stuff we've already started.
And just as another, and sometimes this is what convolutes it, uh. You know, there there's a fine line between doing your due diligence and 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 maybe, you know, getting off track, but. The the, I was approached by um Howland Superintendent, uh James Tannalon, who was here today, about looking at um. North Road School for a facility for nine-one-one, you know, this is, this adds another. Um you know, that that they think would be perfect, can you come look at it, it's one of those things. We've gotta continue to do that due diligence, I think, but at the same time, it sort of gets us off track in a way because you have to, you have to give it. At least a look see, you know, or look once over to to make sure that it's something that we can actually use or not use. So I'm meeting with um. James and the and the superintendent to at least look at that on Thursday. And I know we've done the feasibility study and I know that that there are different options out there that we need to be looking at, but. How how do you not do your due diligence and at least give this a look?
Well, I guess too, when I get complaints right here from people, like you guys need to do that, they don't know, you're already meeting with Mr. Fennel, you're already doing that.
Of course.
I I already went and looked at the coroner's office, I've already met with uh Mr. Snyder about the dog pound, just this past weekend. So there are things they don't see, just cause they see these meetings.
Yes.
They don't see what goes on Monday afternoons and Tuesday nights and Friday mornings when we're not here in front of the camera. And those are things, I don't know, maybe we just need to elaborate a little more with what's going on and in a different situation, a different world. We may have commissioners that handle certain departments, if you have updates weekly on what's actually going on to the public here's. You know, we're not in that world right at this point to be able to do that, so there's a whole bunch of stuff going in this like soup of what we do.
Yes.
That we just tackle what seems like what's at hand and what we address in a meeting, they don't see all the moving parts of it, but.
Agreed.
I still don't want anybody to sit back in their heels and think anybody's just coasting or cruising through. Government, you know, I don't want government, our government at least, to be that way, I know Julie works her butt off every day, Gary's working his butt off every day, Diane's working her butt off every day. Prosecutor's got an inbox that I don't even wanna imagine the stuff he's dealing with every day and John with all your employees. These people are working, we're working as government, sometimes the squeaky wheel gets degrees or gets the headlines in the newspaper, but by no means are we. Did we forget about the dog, no means we forget about nine-one-one or employees, they're waiting, well, what's going on, it was hurry up, don't hurry up and wait, a lot of action and nothing. They may not see everything, but we need to still keep it conscious that we need to check ourselves too, to make sure that we aren't delaying a day or two or a week or putting things off at all. We just gotta keep it moving forward for the public.
Agreed, agreed. A lot of moving parts, a lot of moving parts, and we have a lot of issues to tackle, especially capital asset issues. And um I think we're doing our due diligence, but it, but it does take a little bit of time.
It's been an awesome last two years so far.
It sure had.
But but we just need to keep that momentum moving, and when I heard yesterday that, you know, Healthy Arts Plaza, eighty-one dogs, that kind of sparked me like. Holy cow, as fast as you move, that things keep piling up more and more and more, and then that just ties in with the dog pound. Questions that I get weekly from people that, what's going on with the dog, and and they will keep us in check, I mean, there are people that. They wanna know weekly, you know, what did you do last week, not, not what's going on next week, what did you do last week to move forward? So that's why I need, if we don't put it on table, we can't address it, we can't talk about it, now knowing that there's a new rendering for the the plan. You know, that that's information that was not out there before for everybody, but behind the scenes, it's something you gotta cover, you know, but probably just always see that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the media only picks up one, sometimes uh, you know, the sore thumb that sticks out or whatever, that, you know, the the sexy news that comes out.
Not Ray, but everybody else.
Anybody else have anything, feel good?
I wanted to make a recommendation, I'm sorry, this real quick, years ago. Elected officials used to do public service announcements partnering with our local television stations. You may wanna do one of those for, to bring a light to the issue with the dog situation. We also need Bob Barker to help people spay and neuter their pets.
Right. I I did bring that up to Jason yesterday about, and that's where I said I'll talk to Commissioner Camalasa tomorrow, bringing up at a public meeting.
Yes.
And like you said, we can team up maybe bipartisan way as commissioners on behalf of the dog pound and and they want. You know, let's, let's, let's hit that on our social media, let's kind of lead that way with make that, by bringing up today, we're bringing it as an issue.
Yeah.
And hopefully Ray prints something there that says, hey, there's an issue going on, consider adopting, you know, consider. Giving love to an animal that's that's sitting in a shelter right now, not only do they need a home, but we need the space and. We need, you know, the less mouths to feed, the less burden it is on the taxpayers, someone else can take care of it at at their home and adopt that animal. Now, right now, it's just a problem, it's compounding, and now we're getting the winter months when it's colder, you know, and it's gonna require a lot more TLC, a lot more. Fuel, a lot more heat, a lot, you know, a lot more of everything, um let's get the, let's clean out some of these kennels. Rookie move.
That's all years and seen the slide, it's old. Yeah, yeah, he probably hasn't even noticed.
I couldn't watch it.
I have.
Okay, with that, I guess the last thing is, there is a tourism tour that we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
At the end, we'll get to Sean, at the end of the month, um now's the time, I think, where Trumbull County shines, my favorite time of the year in Trumbull County. Hunting season's here, there are people deer hunting, there are people duck hunting soon, there's still good fishing. There's still good fishing going on in this mosquito lake. Um, we have three of the largest wildlife ferries in the state that are in our county, so we will have thousands of visitors come to Trumbull County um to recreate here over the next couple of months. You got all the apple festivals and apple farms. And I encourage people to go to Hartford, I encourage people to Lordstown and and see the little farm markets that we have, the creeksides in Hubbard or in Howland and and all these little unique little things that make our town, our townships and our our county great. Um, take Sunday drives in the fall and see what we have to offer in the county. You know, and this is the time of year that I live for particularly is, you know, I'm a fall type of guy. And, you know, when you smell, when the weather's forty degrees and, you know, to me, that just gets my blood flowing when it comes to the cold weather like this, being an outdoorsman. So um, we encourage people to to get outside and see what Trumbull County has to offer during during the fall.
Absolutely. For summer, but that's okay.
It's okay. We got plenty of summer activities too.
Yeah. Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. The dog pound is one of the things I wanted to hit on today. Uh, we haven't heard anything in a while and there are people that want more frequent updates. Uh, and what I heard you say, it sounds like, obviously, there's no way they're gonna get into that new pound this year. But another problem is, and you kind of addressed it with uh with Jason, and they've been pretty Jason's been swamped pretty much since the open. Dumping of the dogs is very, of the injured dogs is getting worse. We have one dumped more township. There's that poodle that was dumped that's burned, I was just in the news yesterday. It's really on hand. Uh, another thing I was hitting, one of, you know, winter's coming. Kind of addressed that, winter's coming. Uh, and every year is a problem at the pound where we're gonna run out of space because they can't use them outside kennels once the temperature drop. So what are we gonna do this year? Let's start thinking about this now. What are we gonna do about the overflow? So let's just think about that now instead of wait until it starts to blow up. Something can happen to be done, you know, they're gonna run out of room, no. They can't overflow on Jason, Jason's already.
Yeah.
In the past, we've used um the old fire station, so portion of that that was heated, we just heated. And we kept four or five kennels in there, dogs during winter time. That may need to be an option again uh in the process. But um yeah, every every year this this becomes a a greater and greater issue unfortunately. And people are not caring for animals the way that people used to care for animals, I guess. It's very sad and it's that very sad commentary on society in general. But at the same time, um, we're moving as quickly as we can. We know that we want to build something, but we don't want to build something that's, um, you know. First and foremost, as Alex said before, you know, you're you're gonna increase to thirty kennels. You're gonna need more employees, obviously. You're gonna double your employee because you're gonna need
An overhead, because of all that.
So so I'd love to build one with a hundred kennels, to be honest with you, but can the can the county sustain that, can the county
Right.
financially, you know, do that. I think we're in a better spot now of getting more license fees and collecting more money than we ever have, thanks to our auditor. She's done a phenomenal job. Um, but but, you know, I think this is gonna be a much needed improvement when you talk about care, when you talk about truly brought up, spay and neuter program, we're gonna be able to use in Wolfherly and their facility for our spay and neuter program. Which is already, which I'd like to see as mandatory. And and uh, we're working towards that. That's all expensive too. Um, you know, as far as shared services, you know, it's gonna be like sort of a one-stop shop where okay, if you don't like a dog here, you might adopt a dog here. So I think it's, it's, it's gonna be it's gonna be phenomenal, but I I sympathize what you're saying because it has been a long time coming and and there have been a lot of hiccups in the road. There've been a lot of hiccups just finding this facility, finding this space. And thank God for Animal Wolfherly donated this property. Um, because otherwise we could look in at different places. We looked in Warren, we looked at Warren Township, we looked at Champion. Um, prior to this, and it just didn't suit our needs. So I think this is gonna be a lasting improvement that we're gonna be very proud of in the future and it can't happen soon enough. There's there's not just a problem with the dogs, you have a serious cat problem, Trumbull County also. You're right. We're really bad cat. Barrel cat. Yeah. Yes. Again, with spay and neuter is important, but the funding couldn't be spay and neuter, it's not like there. Yeah, basketball, some does it a couple of times a year, like the ball tap needs gets in on on it, oh, the TNR is always something. I heard something Dave Snyder, but like I said, we're gonna get We don't I mean, you're correct, as I said, you said about the town, we two years ago, talks on the pound, they go back waiting for it. Pound's been on the back burner. It hasn't gotten your attention either. Uh, another thing I want to hit on was, where are we at with the new building at the fair? The new building with the bathrooms down the other end, where are we at with that? Any updates on that?
Four H going, Bill Hart.
Bill Hart, Trumbull County man, it's um, I just met with Mike Swinsty yesterday. We're ready to go up for an RFP. It's ours to top. So we're ready to move on to new four H junior building. The bathrooms that I think you're talking about are already done.
No, well, the new building will have mass exhibit.
Yes.
And new, yeah, showers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Down by the horse.
What's what's other building or?
No, that's the one.
Oh, okay, okay.
The new, the new big one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's about two weeks out for an RFP. Mike's doing a big work and he's working with the uh engineer design, so ready to go in two weeks.
Another thing with the, with the, you know with the fair, if the PA system up there needed upgraded, who would, who would, that, that, that financial? Is that the commissioners or does that fall back on the board? It all falls back on the fair board, but we all, we historically and more so now than ever have assisted with the board with financial. I know when we had the Halloween thing up there, great feedback, great feedback. I agree. It was, it was great. I hope it's better every year. Yes, uh, one of the big things I did notice up there though, that event, a lot of people complained about was PA system. You cannot understand what they're saying. Yeah, can you look at that?
We could check into it. It would cost upgrade a PA system. And how they dispersed, you know, they want to split it. Are you guys, you know?
Typically, we work well with them, you know, on
On projects.
On projects and and they they shoulder some of the costs as we, it's our, it's our property, so we want to be as nice as possible. But they they've always kicked in too.
Yes.
So it's always been sort of collaboration between the two of them. And like Daniel always said, I'd like to see the fair grow. I don't think we use it enough. I think it sits down too much. And when it's sitting down and not being used, sometimes that can be hard on upkeep. Uh, you better confuse it more often. I know there's a big haunted hayride thing going on up there right now for this month. See good feedback on that. There's some infrastructure challenges that we have to try and work through. They're gonna be, as far as water and sewer go, it's gonna be costly and um require some planning and assistance by the state federal government. And uh, but first things first, we've been trying to address a lot of I think we've done a lot.
I think the fair was an outstanding job right now to attract the new business and allowing them business and that I I agree, I want that to be a three sixty-five facility. People be in and out all day long, night, walking, walking their dogs, jogging, running, utilizing the buildings, pulling the beds there. We we all had sports federation meeting there last night, the Azan, so, so, thanks for, for that, for making their going available. And we're gonna continue to grow.
Well, just road right here north. Is that at Warren City or is that a county?
Sarment or North Park?
North Park, that's right here on Warren, goes out to Big Mikes.
City on State Streets.
Yeah, that's the rural city.
If it's they paved it up there. I don't I don't know why, but usually you're generally told when you pave a road, you never cut it again. You don't pave it and they cut right in, that's stupid. And there's a spot up down by Big Mikes where they cut two trenches across the road. And it's beating the hell out of my car every time I go through it. There's low spots, there's high spots.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're doing. This has been going on for weeks.
I think they ran new gas lines across the road. That's what they did.
But that should have been done before they paved. It's like they're down there tearing up the sidewalks too, after they've paved. It's all this rear and tear on that fresh paint.
Gas company, that city of Warren, that.
But he's saying, it's ordinance.
Yeah, they should ordinate, but if you pave a road, you never want to cut it.
Yes, but the city of Warren has no control over a private. They have to follow a process of permits and such, but they can't force them to say, hey, city of Warren, we're gonna install gas lines now. So, but I agree, it's just don't know the answer, how do you solve that?
The path will go down there toward, I don't know, while they haven't done a final, it seems like they're done, but it's it's not a permanent, it's a quick back, it's a work. I don't know why they didn't sign, cut it and make it nicer.
Back to Warren City.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion, big motion of the jury, second.
Yes.